Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could, and remain standing for more than silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of thematic states of America and to our beloved nation, God, in the middle of the desert.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Kerns.
I am here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Dannenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Millow Wambly.
Here. And with no recognitions or appointment, we're gonna move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, is there a public comment?
We received no emailed public comment, but we do have one person registered to speak. And we'll start with Marty Seigle after you read your statement.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time seized.
Hello. Is this supposed to be on? Am I, am I okay? Okay, sorry. I'm Marty Seigel. I've been in Bloomington a long time, and this has been a special interest of mine. Zoning has been a special interest. In, not in 2015, I was a member of the Bloomington Housing Working Group for the Bring It On Bloomington Project. And, but I am not listed in the official report because, although I attended all the meetings except for the last one, at, I resigned in protest when I discovered that the group's final report would declare a policy of greater density in our city. This was 2015. At the McLean County Regional Planning Commission meeting after that, the leaders of two other groups, in addition to our working groups, there were only three that day, also recommended greater density in their very, very short presentations to the commission. The plan was adopted by the city council in August of 2015. Now, we seem to have developed reasons for the push for greater density. It's a national trend, I do some reading on this. And today, we see efforts to eliminate zoning regulations in order to provide incentives for infill developments. The reason seems to be that greater density will solve the shortage of affordable housing. But rents have been high in Bloomington for many decades, many decades, more than 40 years, and I know. And it's difficult to imagine that more incentives for developers who expect to profit from their projects will somehow produce lower rents. We also are learning that construction costs have become more expensive, yet the focus is still on new buildings, not on preservation. The relaxation of codes has invited inappropriate projects in our neighborhoods. The loss of green space and the increase in parking lots have not only made neighborhoods less attractive, the more barren landscape has caused temperatures to rise, requiring more air conditioning in our houses. It's also caused more runoff, challenging our sewer system and causing more flooding in our basements. An obvious example is the expansion of Midwest construction rentals along the Constitution Trail between Locust and Chestnut Street. I sent you an email with some images about that. There were once two small landscape businesses on Linden Street, and there was grassy land west of the tracks. We held our first Old East Side Neighborhood picnic on that land in the 90s. Now, there's barbed wire around the entire block, and heavy equipment has been driven into the fence a few feet from the Constitution Trail. Again, I sent you images of this. Midwest Construction Rentals enjoys a business relationship with the city. Bloomington's 2015 Treasurers Report, for example, showed the city paid $130,898.53 to the company that year. The bill from March.
Sorry, your minutes are up.
I went over?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Could you send those to us?
Yeah, I just have a pair. I'm sorry, I timed it, I guess not carefully enough. There were public here, there were no public hearings for this. That's, that's the important point. And, and it was just allowed. The, the trail was simply designated to be commercial land, not parkland, as it is a park trail. So, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You can, if you want, you can send it to the clerk, and then we'll, we'll have it, your comments.
Thank you, I apologize.
Yeah, no, no worries, thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, and second by Councilmember Ward. It's a fight here, too. Little bit of excitement, right? Okay, the consent agenda passes, and there are no needs to announce. And now, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda with item 8A, a consideration and action on, one, an ordinance amending the budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending April 30 of 2025 in the amount of $5,425,000 for both the general fund to transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund where the purchase will be executed. And two, an ordinance approving a real estate transaction and agreement for the purchase of Owens Nursery for the relocation of the city's Public Works campus in the amount of $5,424,000, $25,000, as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason. I'm sorry. Oh, yikes, yikes. Is it twice? Heh, I just have it here. City manager, well, super duper City Manager Jergens.
Thank you, I'm sure. Can we, I think I've got a slide on this. Just a couple comments I wanted to make, and then happy to answer any questions. When I started at the city in 2014, one of the first things I heard about was the need to find a new location for our Public Works campus. It was outdated, it was not large enough. The facilities were not, not well-served. And so, there was already staff looking for a new location for our Public Works campus. And, and they, while they were looking, never found that perfect location or a good location. In 2019, the city utilized, had a study done by BKV Group. And they came in and they evaluated what are the exact needs for Public Works. And they said that you need about 20 acres at least, but ideally, for future planning, it'd be between 25 and 30 acres. You need about 60,000 to 160,000 square feet for the facilities. And they said, probably at the low end, you're looking at about a $68 million investment. On the high end, an $80 million investment. And that was in 2019. So, you add, they said, about five years, you're gonna increase that price to about $13 million. So, you know, looking at the high end, about $93 million for a new facility. And that was just going to cover kind of the bare bones of what we needed for Public Works and, and some of our other department needs. So, we were looking, we were looking, we were looking, and not finding anything. There's not a large mass of land like that located centrally in the city. Ideally, you'd have something that was central, and you could kind of, you know, vet out for something, but everything's covered by residential, and there's, there's just not a big site like that. We had a staff member that was out near the Owens Nursery, saw that it was closing, and I think this was last in 2023, and immediately raised the issue of, hey, what about this property? Is it really closing? Is it really for sale? So, we started, we, we batted it around internally. And early in January of 2023, then-city manager Gleason said, let's go ahead and let's, let's see what, if we could potentially get ahold of this piece of property. So, we started it back in January of 2023. This site is 34 acres. Again, we were looking for between 20 to 30. So, we, we've got the acreage here. This site is 130,000 square foot with about 30,000 of potential office space. Again, we were looking between 60 and 160,000. We were able to negotiate a purchase price of $5.4 million roughly for the property. And so, that's not gonna be the end of the investment in this property. We will need to do improvements, we'll need to build a fleet building, and we'll need to upgrade some of the office space and, and make some changes and, and secure the site and do some other things. But even all in, as we budget and we phase these improvements, we're looking at, at spending under $24 million. And again, we'll be budgeting that over the next few years. So, all in, this is gonna be a substantial savings to the city. Substantial is not even the word for it. It's gonna be a tremendous savings to the city to be able to do this. The buildings are, we're gonna be able to have every piece of equipment covered that we own right now, that, that's currently not covered. We have thousands of, thousands of dollars, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that we will now be able to keep under a roof and, and help hide from the elements. When our current facility was built, it was not built for our large Vector trucks or our garbage trucks that have arms and things like that. The buildings on this site will be able to house all of those. So, we're very excited about that. They're not only gonna be able to house our Public Works equipment, but they'll be able to meet all the other storage needs of the city. We're gonna look, we're gonna reach out to our local universities, see if there could be a partnership with some of the greenhouses out there. We're excited about that, those possibilities as well. And, you know, eventually, potentially be able to relocate our citizens' convenience center out here. We're also going to be able to add drainage to this site. This core area of the city has very poor drainage. So, adding some drainage is another, you know, checks another box for why this is a great deal and a, a smart move for the city. So, we are very excited about this. We think it's, it's gonna be a great thing for the city. Some improvements that need to be made, but the bones are very good. A lot of buildings that we're not gonna have to rebuild. The fleet building, as I said, there's not a building out there large enough to house our fleet needs. So, in the, in future budget years, we will be planning and budgeting for a new fleet facility. Right now, as, as I think all of you have been out to our fleet department, they're working on trucks and equipment out in the parking lot. Whether it's 30 below zero or 110, they have to work on things in the parking lot. That, that, that facility is completely underperforming for what our needs are, and so, we are gonna be able to fix that. And there's gonna be a space at this facility for that. It's also close to gas stations, so instead of immediately adding more gas pumps to this site, we're gonna be able to save some money and hopefully contract with a gas, gas station in the area to help meet our needs for that as well. Again, all of this works out very well from a time standpoint because our current Public Works campus, it's not only undersized and not meeting our needs today, but it also needs to be relocated because it's been identified as a site for the East Street Basin. So, as we work to remove these, the buildings and the, the items on our current Public Works campus, that will all turn into what is gonna be known as the East Street Basin. We're gonna be relining, or relocating some sewer lines. We're gonna be doing a lot of other work there. It'll be a wet bottom detention basin. But that's, that entire area is gonna be transformed, which is gonna be a nice element, not only to help address water issues, but to provide an amenity to that area of the town as well. So, a lot of things that we're excited about with this, with this purchase of this property and would recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Bowlin?
Me?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Ward.
I did have some questions.
Sure, okay, Councilmember Motney?
So, first of all, I appreciate the search that has gone into this.
So first of all, I appreciate the search that has gone into this location. I have no concerns with the location. And I think some of the plans that have been shared with us to use the greenhouses, for example, to offset the cost of seasonal plants that are purchased and things like that is all, you know, really positive. The one piece that, as I've shared previously, that I am uncomfortable with was a decision made to retain commercial real estate assistance from viewing realty out of Decatur. As I looked at this contract when the packet was released to us on Saturday evening, the commission at five percent on this purchase price translates to two hundred and seventy-one thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars that will be leaving our community and going to Decatur to pay for a commercial realtor when we have a realty community here who certainly could have helped support this transaction. I want to just acknowledge that I realized that decision was made by the prior city manager. But I do want to voice that concern on multiple levels. Second piece of that as well is the rate of commission at five percent on a transaction this high of commercial real estate seems to be outside of the going rate. You know, there are numerous conversations going on in the courts about real estate commissions as of light and commercial realty is specifically an area where I believe that commission rate could have been negotiated. And while the contract reflects this to be the seller's agent, it's my understanding and confirmed from City Manager Gleason in an email that he wrote to all of the council in April, he advised that he was working with a realtor to explore throughout the community and that it was only a coincidence that the realtor, realtor selected was from Decatur, predating the offer he received there. And he goes on to say that he has the authority to enter into letters of intent and then the transaction is completed with council's approval. That is where we are tonight. We are here tonight to approve this transaction. I don't have concern with the sales transaction itself, but I do have concern with how this commission plays into it. So the questions that I have is to whether or not any effort was made to negotiate the rate of commission. And if any other realtors were involved at that time, City Manager Gleason said that we only had a verbal understanding with this realtor and that there wasn't a written contract at that point.
Thank you for the questions. And I can understand and appreciate the, the concern and the desire to, to use local realtors on, on transactions. And I think that's, you know, certainly something we can talk about and we can look at other ways to do that. I know, you know, we've talked about potentially doing like an RFQ process or, or different things for that. And so that's certainly something I, I'd be interested in exploring further. There was no written agreement between us and the realtor. I, I think it would be, if anything, considered a verbal. He considered this a dual agency. He helped put this deal together. As I said, we, we contacted him in January and it took some time. This is a, the property is held by an LLC and so had to get the members on board and, and everything like that. So it, it took a little bit of time. Originally, they wanted to lease it. So we had to go, you know, we, we were not interested in leasing it. So had to, to get through that and to eventually get to a purchase price. I, we did not have any negotiations with regard to the sellers, the commission. And so that's something that, as the contract says, that they will, they will pay that commission. They're responsible for that. And, you know, my understanding is probably not unfamiliar with a lot of contracts. The, the seller is going to kind of fix their price based on what they know that commission's going to be to what they ultimately make.
So just in, in closing, I just want to share some of the balance of the email of April the fifteenth that, that we all received from former City Manager Gleason. He indicates that council is aware that he has the authority to enter into letters of intent and then the transaction is completed, but it's a critical step for him. He mentioned specifically that transactions such as these can need to move quickly, which is one of the reasons we avoided a Bloomington Normal Realtor. And then there are two bullet points following that. Avoid offending those we didn't pick and avoid conflicts of interest or the connections with all the players related to matters like these. I, I think it's important to share this as we look to the future with the leadership of a new city manager here in this community, that, that conveys to me a lack of trust and confidence in our local realty community. And I hope in the future that we will really look about procurement of services locally when those services are available. And in this case, I feel they were available and that that commission should have stayed within this community.
Other questions, comments? Okay, see you then. Ready? Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to City Manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If we could go to the. Thank you, Mayor and Council. If we could go to the first slide and the next slide. All right, so trying to give an update to the council and the community at, at all of our meetings because the homelessness issue is such an important issue in our community. And want to, want to let everybody know what's going on, what's, what's being done to address this. We are narrowing in on the need for more shelter options in the community. I've got a smaller group, smaller focused meeting tomorrow morning where we're going to be talking about some specific sites and some specific possibilities. So more to come on that. Wanted to, to let you know those, those discussions are ongoing and, and they are going on with an emergent need. Also wanted to share, I, I talked to Matt Burgess from Home Sweet Home today, kind of get an update on what's going on there and, and some of the things they're doing. Just want to share, they, they continue to be a very strong partner in all of this and, and they're doing a lot of work to really help address this issue. The, the tent encampment there is down to about twenty people. I think at one point, they had about thirty-four. They are screening, they're trying to get people housed in proper housing with proper suitable shelter. So we are starting to see some progress there and I, I think we'll continue to see progress. But wanted to, again, express my thanks for what they're doing and others in the community. There, there are some very passionate people in this, this community that we're, 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 we're working with and that we're, we're very lucky to have in this community. So wanted to thank them for that. Next slide. This is, this is really talking about, I'm going to say this wrong because I say it every time wrong, Tailgate and Tall Boys. This event is coming up this Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. All four days, we're looking at having about sixty thousand, a, a little under sixty-one thousand people here for this event. It's a big event. It takes a lot of resources of both the city and the town, but it also brings a lot to the community. So just wanted to share that this is going on. Don't have a slide about everything that happened last weekend, but this is coming on the heels of a very exciting weekend we had last weekend with a concert at the lawn of the BCPA, cogs and corsets, First Friday, Saturday sidewalks. So a lot of things going on in the city and we'll continue to keep you updated on, on all of those. Next slide. Just a quick update on our lead service line replacement program. We've given out five hundred and fourteen tests where people can call in and they can request to have a test to see if their water test positive for lead. So far, we've received two hundred and thirty-seven results back with no actionable detections yet. So that's a very positive, good sign. Also wanted to give a shout out to our website that we've developed for this, BloomingtonIL.gov backslash leadlines. This is a webpage, all information on the leadlines. You can go on here and there's an interactive map. You can see where we've identified leadlines and where the, get other information on this project. So just wanted to give a quick update on what we're seeing so far with those lead tests. Next slide. Maybe there's not another slide. All right. So the last slide was going to be about a website we're creating called Building Bloomington. And this is going to be a website that we're going to roll out that's got, it's a, got a housing development ready map. So any units that are final plotted, you know, any lots that you could potentially build on, it'll have information on our project review group process, information that, that you can search for specific sites to build, information on HUD traffic, on HUD census tracts, labor statistics for our community and then also like a one place, a one-stop shop for incentives, permits, zoning, our engineering checklist. So this is something we're going to be rolling out and it's actually live now. I added that slide late, so that's why it's not up there. But this will be an exciting place for you to go and it's called Building Bloomington and a one-stop shop again for all things housing-related. Tomorrow, we're having our housing symposium. We have, I think, almost sixty people now, a good mix of contractors, developers and lenders that will be at this event. And we're going to, we'll do a full report on what we find. But we're excited to see what, what we learn about barriers to housing in the community and potential steps we can do to overcome those barriers. So a full report will be coming back to the, this council, the committee, the whole next Monday. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And under Mayor's comment, just want to thank City Manager Jergens for all your efforts on the homelessness situation. I, I think, you know, it's, it's nice to see all of those effort, efforts being ramped up and, and just collaborating with many other individuals in the community and, and, you know, really hoping that we can solve that. And also appreciate the housing symposium that I will be attending, I think, with a couple of other council members tomorrow. So that would be, I'm really looking forward to learning more about what exactly those barriers are, particularly in the community and, and see how we can overcome that. And on, I, let me also, I'm very excited about what's happening and all of the, the activity that we're seeing in, in the community, not only hockey, but also concerts and, and, you know, the farmer's market, really lots of really exciting things happening in the community. You can't wait for that first hockey game. That's going to be a lot of fun. So again, thanks to the staff for all of their efforts because I know that's what it, you know, it takes a lot of people to make all that stuff happen. People come in and they have fun, but there's a lot of work that goes on in the background. So really appreciate that. And then on the, on the lighter side, I, I, I know that we have a softball game on Juneteenth that will involve council members. I, I think we still have some spots left, right, for people to join and play. And I'm hoping, there you go. I'm, I'm hoping there will be paramedics in attendance, you know. You know, and, you know, physical therapists and everything because it seems like I, yes, I, I tend to get injured every time I, I go out and do something physical, especially soccer. So, but I've been told that softball is a little lighter, so. But, you know, we'll, we'll see. So this will be fun. It's on, so Juneteenth, which is taking place on June twenty-second at Miller Park, right? And at ten AM. So we're going to sell tickets. So you guys should come out. It's going to be a lot of fun. We're not selling tickets, it's free. So, so council members, if you have anything that you'd like to add? Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Bloomington Police Department, especially Chief Simmington. And I won't get everybody's rank right. So I will just say Chad Walmsley, Aaron Veerman, Clayton Arnold, Chad Hitchens, Benjamin Brace and Molly Monahan for walking around the ward, Ward seven. Last Wednesday it was, spending a couple of hours talking to neighbors and I think learning a lot about people's concerns. And I appreciated getting chance to spend time with them. Would recommend it to anybody.
Others? Okay.
Just. It is.
Okay, all right. Awesome, so it, we do not have an executive session. So at this point, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Hendricks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see you next Monday.